Sengents, guys.
Hello, and thank you for joining us tonight. My name is James Tilton, and I'm a local teacher. I'm joined by three esteemed candidates for Area Three Trustee of the AVUHSD School Board. They are competing to represent me and my students. And if you live in Lancaster, chances are that they are competing to represent you as well. These candidates are here tonight to answer questions from the community. Before we get to our first question, I'd like to remind the candidates of the rules for tonight's debate. You will all answer every question, and you will do so in a rotating order. The order has been selected randomly. You will each have a minute and 30 seconds to answer each question, but please don't feel like you have to use that entire time. Facebook Live cuts off their videos automatically at 90 minutes, and we have more questions than we do time. Let's get started. Our first question tonight comes from Karen Hall. Please tell us about yourself, including the experiences and achievements that you believe qualify you to be a board member. Danita, we're going to start with you.
Well, just a little bit about myself. I've been volunteering in our schools and our local community for almost 30 years. Through my years with PTA, I was honored by the PTA Lifetime Membership Award. I have chaired two bond committees, one for the Lancaster School District, one for the High School District, and they both passed. And the one for the High School District enabled the High School District to build Eastside High School, bringing a state-of-the-art school to the east side of the valley. I also co-chaired the first bond campaign for the Antelope Valley College, and in total, the three bond campaigns have provided about a half of $1 billion in jobs and new schools. I helped develop effective communication for the High School District. I'm fiscally responsible, helped the district through some tough financial years. I worked with Somus Investments that put the solar panel parking in the parking lots at all the high school districts. It was the first and largest project of its kind in the United States. It was a $25 billion, million-dollar project. I am a founding member of the Los Angeles County Airshow, a founding member of the Aerospace Valley Robotics. I'm a governor-appointed director for the Antelope Valley Fair, 50th District Agricultural District, and I was previously on the board with the High School District.
That's timed, Danita.
2015.
Thank you very much. And we're going to go ahead and go for our next one to Dana. Go ahead, Dana, and tell us about your experiences and achievements that you believe qualify you to be a board member.
I'm a graduate of Yale University, the first blind student to graduate from the undergraduate college there. I have a degree in math. I went to law school at USC, and I've been a member of California Bar since 1978. For 29 years, I worked as an administrative law judge for the California Department of Social Services. Throughout the time that I've gone to school and worked, I have volunteered to tutor, teach, coach, mentor high school students, particularly in the Antelope Valley, since the early '90s, starting with working with students at Highland High School. Currently, I'm working with students at SOAR High School, but I have coached them in public speaking. I'm the mock trial advisor for SOAR High School team, and I'm the advisor for a team called Girls Build, a group of girls on the campus who focus on civic engagement. And I've done all of this as volunteers because I love the students. And in working with the students, I've actually helped them earn up to $100,000 in cash and scholarships just from speech competition.
Thank you, Dana. And Christian, tell us about yourself, the experiences and achievements.
Yes, sir. Greetings, everyone. I want to say thank you to James for hosting this in AV Press as well. Just to start off, we are currently living in a pandemic where there is an extraordinary need for hope, right? And so we have to realize that we are in this together. So if you are on Facebook, I would love for you to hashtag TogetherWeCan in the comments, hashtag TogetherWeCan. Who I am, my current involvement, I'm an educator. I teach high school, I teach community college, I teach at UCLA, Cal State as well. I'm a youth pastor. I've been servicing this area and over 1,000 students from all schools in our district. I'm a mentor, I'm an author. My book is called Uncovering Your Worth: From Legal Custody to UCLA, where I talk about my own lived experiences. I'm a motivational speaker. I've spoken all over the country and even internationally in Paris on debate teams. And so I'm a foster youth advocate. I'm a CEO. I have my own nonprofit that I'm working on. I'm also a part of a lot of different boards and steering committees with over $50 million in funding. I am a Democratic delegate for this area, as well as a VP for our Democratic Club of the High Desert. My education and my experience as an educator on the front lines, I know that I can bring so much to this board. As a UCLA graduate with my bachelor's and master's, currently working on being admitted for my Juris Doctorate and on various boards, I know policy and procedures. And then, more importantly, I'm an alumni of Antelope Valley High School, Golob's class of 2004. Thank you.
All right. Our next question comes to us from Robin Young, who is a former AVUHSD Teacher of the Year. She asked this question. Why do you want to serve on the AVUHSD School Board? And what do you hope to accomplish during your time on the board? Dana, let's start with you.
Because I've been working with high school students since the early '90s, I have had an interest in high school learning. I know the students have the potential to accomplish great things, and they simply need the right encouragement, the right words, the right role model. I would like to serve on the board because that gives me an opportunity to be involved in the policymaking, to be a role model for all of the students, all 22,000 approximately students, instead of just the classroom of students that I work at the specific school. In other words, I think that the resources that we have available within our community should be available to all students and not just to the students who happen to be at the school where the person is. So my service on the board would allow me to have a greater impact, sharing what I've done at the campuses where I volunteer now.
And Christian, what about you? Why do you want to serve on the board, and what do you hope to accomplish?
I'm running because education saved my life. I am a testament of how education can shape and determine one's success or failure. You see, I was born in a jail cell to an incarcerated mother who I never met and who was incapable of nurturing and raising me. So together with the love and care from my grandparents from two days old until I was 15 years old, then even with the help of my foster family and with the help of my teachers and mentors, I graduated high school. I attended five community colleges, and then I graduated top of my class with my bachelor's degree and master's degree from the University of California, Los Angeles. I'm running to ensure that all of our students in the Antelope Valley High School District, that they receive quality education that they deserve. I'm running to be a peacemaker on the board. There's a lot of back and forth, arguing, and unwilling to compromise amongst the board members, where the interest of our students is really taking a backseat. And there are political agendas, there are personal attacks, and honestly, this has to stop. The future of our students' success is my number-one priority. I will be the voice for our students, for our teachers, for our parents, and for our community, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you. And Danita, what about you? Why do you want to serve on the board, and what do you hope to accomplish? Danita, I think you're muted.
There you go. Sorry about that. I'm sorry.
No worries.
I'll be real fast with my answer. When I started, when my oldest daughter started school, she had an amazing kindergarten teacher, and I saw firsthand the miracles that teachers performed every day in the classroom. I also saw the problems and the challenges that teachers had in getting everyone to that point of ready to go off to the next grade level. And I wanted to be a part of that. I wanted to help. I wanted to find a way that I could help all these students, you know, in their journey through public school. And so I started. I stayed five years in kindergarten. I absolutely loved working with the kindergarten teacher, but I have to tell you, the chairs were just a little too low for me to keep getting up and down, and I moved on to other grades. But, and I continued to see the miracles, I continued to see the challenges. I joined PTA. I became PTA president for a number of years. I joined district committees and started for the Lancaster School District several projects. I started Team Video Productions, which is a video production company for the district, and I am the videographer. And I started then from moving from elementary and middle to high school and continued to see the wonderful things that are being done for kids. And I wanted to not only be a part of that, but I wanted to make sure that all the students got those benefits and the opportunities to achieve. And that's why I'm running now, because I'm not finished. I still have a lot of things that I want to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Danita. Our next question is going to be for Christian first. Schools are currently closed due to the pandemic. What are your thoughts regarding when and how we should reopen campuses?
Yes, can you repeat the question for me, please?
Yeah. Schools are currently closed due to the pandemic. What are your thoughts regarding when and how we should reopen campuses?
Yeah, definitely. So this is one of my top priorities. During COVID-19, we have to put our students' safety as number-one priority. Their needs need to come first, right? So no student should return to school. We cannot afford to lose one scholar, one student. I would be remiss if we do not understand that, you know, losing a child is detrimental to someone, and it's traumatic, and I would not want that to happen. I've been doing a lot of different research, and I've even seen in Europe where they've reopened the schools, but people are getting reinfected. And so I want us to be cautious about this because, at the end of the day, we don't know when this is going to end right now. And so for myself, we have to make sure that we invest in our kids, we do our homework, and make sure that their safety is number one. Thank you.
Danita, what about you? Your thoughts regarding when and how we should reopen campuses?
Well, it's an interesting topic, and there are, on both sides, we not only have to make sure that our students are safe, but our teachers and our staff members are safe as well. I don't know if I mentioned previously, both of my daughters are teachers, and one teaches in Alaska and the other one teaches here in the Antelope Valley. And the situation is pretty much the same. On one hand, they both want to get back. They miss their kids, they miss working with their kids one-on-one. And then, on the other hand, one of my daughters, her immune system is compromised. She has a very real fear of coming down with it. So if you take that and you multiply it by the hundreds of teachers in the Antelope Valley and the thousands of kids, it's a situation that really needs to be seriously considered. I know that the districts are getting direction from the state and the county, and it changes quite often. I just want to make sure that when kids do go back, that the teachers and the students are protected and that there's safety measures, and there's a lot of safety measures that can be implemented. I want to make sure that those safety measures are put in place and followed through on a daily basis.
Thank you. And Dana, your thoughts regarding when and how we should reopen campuses?
We should reopen campuses when we can achieve the district's vision and the district's accountability plan in doing so. The Vision and the LCAP says that our goal is to provide a safe and secure learning environment. We should not open until we can be sure that the learning environment is safe and secure. It's not only safe and secure for students, but for those who volunteer on the campus, for the teachers, for the janitor, for the clerks, for the administrators, everybody who's involved. That's when we should open.
Thank you. Our next question had various iterations. Two came from Monica Dobson and Alice Rice. They said this, and I'm paraphrasing. "The current board seems locked into a cycle of split votes and dysfunction. What is your plan for overcoming this stalemate and bringing a sense of order back to the board?" Danita, let's start with you.
Well, and I think part of that is because they're short one board member. You know, it does help to have a five-member board, and I think consensus can be achieved easier that way, but communication is key. It always has been for me. And a gentle explanation sometimes of how school districts work so differently than maybe some other organizations. And sometimes, it's not easy to understand exactly all of the different pieces that go together to make this puzzle. And I think that sometimes explaining, talking, a lot of talking helps in answering questions. Open and honest communication, I think, is probably the biggest key.
Thank you. And Dana, what is your plan for overcoming the stalemate the board is currently facing and bringing a sense of order back to that organization?
First of all, the plan is to be the representative for Area Three and providing a third vote that would stop that stalemate of two to two. The education code says you have to have three votes in order for an item to pass. So I want to be the third vote. But also, I believe that my knowledge of parliamentary procedures, my understanding of law, and my skill as a public speaker, I've traveled around the globe giving motivational speeches, I think those characteristics will help to bring the board together, bring a civilized discussion together. Of course, I can't change someone else's tendency to work against what our district is all about. I can't change that, but I can be a positive influence because of my background in public meetings and parliamentary procedure and in understanding the law.
Thank you. And Christian, your thoughts regarding how to overcome the stalemate and bring order back to the board?
That is a good question. I want to say thank you to Monica for bringing that to our attention. If the board members were in my class, I would name it voter trustee class. They would all get an F, all of them, right? We are receiving national news because of their inability to compromise, negotiate with goodwill and good faith on behalf of our students, our teachers, staff, and parents. They fail because they just don't get along. And honestly, they need to put away their differences aside. So they need to put their personal and political agenda to the side, and in that compromise, within that, we need to learn how to compromise. And in that, I want to be the voice of compromise. I want to be the voice of reason. I am going to be the voice of reason if and when elected and be able to bring that to the board. It is time to bring out the racers and, you know, everyone to provide a fresh, clean slate on the board, which I think is necessary to work in the favor of students, teachers, staff, and parents. And so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Our next question comes to us from a community member who asked to be anonymous. It says, "Did you support or oppose the recall of Bob Davis, Victoria Ruffin, and Amanda Perrell?" Dana, let's start with you.
Thank you, Mr. or Ms. Anonymous. I signed the petition for recall, and I gave it a lot of thought. I don't believe in recall as a willy-nilly operation if we disagree with decisions. But I do think that recall is appropriate when a person elected to a position of trust violates that trust. And the position that they were elected to was to act in the best interest of the students. And I saw multiple decisions that were not in the best interest of the student. So I signed the petition.
And Christian, the question goes to you. Did you support or oppose the recall of Bob Davis, Victoria Ruffin, and Amanda Perrell?
I think it was 2018, 2019. I was at my nephew's graduation in Highland, and I was approached in regards to the recall. And I didn't sign the petition there. I did not get involved in the recent recall efforts because I was neither for or against it. I am fully, fully aware of the voter's right to recall and, you know, when they find the need to do them. But I find them unnecessary. I find them divisive, and I find them costly. And that is why we have elections, right? And so in spite of all the grandstanding, the attacks on the recall and board members and exchange and uncivil attacks back and forth, the recall failed. The recall failed, and now the division at the board is even greater, and the anger and the animosity and the lack of cooperation among these board members, it has hurt our children. It has hurt our children's education more than it did before the recall. So the recall made the divide larger. And so ultimately, we have to bring back the board back to the main focus, a calm, rational analysis of what is best for our students' future and their academic achievement.
Thank you. And Danita, did you support or oppose the recall of Bob Davis, Victoria Ruffin, and Amanda Perrell?
I have attended the majority of meetings for the Antelope Valley Union High School District since I've been off the board, and I watch closely. It's always an interesting observation point from the back of the room. And I watched, I watched board members who didn't seem to have students as their number-one focus. I was appalled at the way the student board member was treated, both now, there's been two student board members. I was shocked when a student was giving a presentation, was told, "That's enough, go sit down." I was equally shocked when three students were giving a presentation and they were laughed at by a board member. I joined the recall. This is not, this is not acceptable, and I was a member of, I signed and joined the recall committee.
Thank you. Our next question will be going to Danita first, and the question is this. "The current school board recently voted not to continue..." I'm sorry, the next question is for Christian first. I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep a consistent order. Christian, to you. "The current school board recently voted not to continue their contract with local bilingual radio show Cafe Conleche. If elected, would you vote to bring back that contract?"
Can you repeat that one more time?
Yes. "The current school board recently voted not to continue their contract with local bilingual radio show Cafe Conleche. If elected, would you vote to bring back that contract?"
Yeah. I am a fan of Cafe Conleche, Miss Galindo, I believe is her name. But as a person on the board, it is my job, it is my duty to look at each contract, you know, and each item that comes upon us. I cannot say that I will, and I cannot say that I cannot, that I will not. I would have to look at that time if and when elected to make sure that, you know, things are done precisely and in the best interest of our students and not of specific board members.
And Danita, the question goes to you. Would you vote to renew the contract with Cafe Conleche?
You know, I am on the Antelope Valley Fair Board with Lilia Galindo, and I have gotten to know her and know that she cares about the community, and she cares about communication, especially with the Hispanic families in this Antelope Valley. Cafe Conleche was regularly attended. I think the superintendent's been on. I think Dr. Anthony Martinez, who used to be the director for the EL program at the High School District, was on often. It gave a voice to the Antelope Valley Union High School District to people who may not understood or heard or wanted to know more about the High School District. And I felt it was a good program, and I feel that it should be supported, any communication with our families in a process where maybe we aren't regularly able to communicate with them. Cafe Conleche did that for a lot of people, and so I felt that it was an effective voice.
Thank you. And Dana, the question goes to you. Would you vote to renew the contract with Cafe Conleche?
Yes. I have been a guest on the show. I have listened to the show. I see what Cafe Conleche does in communicating with our bilingual community. I believe it is an essential communication tool. From our local control and accountability plan, we are supposed to build relationships with our community stakeholders, and I consider Cafe Conleche one of those community stakeholders.
Thank you. And Danita, we'll do this next question with you first. "At least one of the current board members has made it clear that they'd like to replace Dr. David Viera as superintendent. If elected, would you vote to retain or dismiss Dr. Viera?"
In the 13 and a half years that I was on the board, I got on the board actually in April of 2002, and Dr. Viera became superintendent in June, a few months later. And so I got to know him. We didn't always agree on every topic, but we always had an open, honest conversation. And as long as I've known Dr. Viera, he cares immensely about the students, the staff, teachers in the Antelope Valley Union High School District. He's a product of local public schools, graduated from AVI High School. His kids all went through the public schools here in the valley. He's vested in the valley, and I find him to be a good, honest man. Was your question, would I vote to retain him?
Retain or dismiss?
Retain.
And Dana, the same question to you. Would you vote to retain or dismiss Dr. Viera?
Retain. I have had a chance to work with Dr. Viera in the years that he's been the superintendent as I've worked with students, and I've needed to get permission to participate district-wide or distribute information district-wide. I've had a wonderful relationship with him and his administrative assistant in getting that done. I think he has a genuine interest in the well-being of the students. Now, I've said retain because, based on what I know now, if, while serving on the board, I learn of some deep, dark secret that is not known, I might have to change a decision. But right now, it would be to retain.
And Christian, would you vote to retain or dismiss Dr. Viera?
So I met Dr. Viera earlier this year when I was speaking at Eastside High School for the Independent City Program put on by the school district. It was an amazing opportunity to meet with our foster youth, foster parents, also those that are foster youth advocates. And during that process, I got to meet Dr. Viera, came up and talked to me, a very amazing guy. I love his spirit. But currently, I have no information or documentation or firsthand knowledge of his job performance and effectiveness, so I have no way of, you know, how he's doing. So if and when I get elected, I will not blindly follow anyone's guidance to hire or fire anyone, and therefore, it would be premature upon me to really make a decision upon Viera's performance. He's been doing a great job, really cool guy, and I feel like he's being fairly compensated. So, yeah.
Thank you. Our next question comes to us from Jeff Patterson, an English teacher and Urban Scholars mentor. He asks, "The current board recently declined to approve a Director of Equity position at the district level. What students are currently being left behind by our district? And do you believe that having a Director of Equity would help them find success?" Christian, the question goes to you. I'm sorry, Dana, the question goes to you. I apologize for being a bad moderator.
Thank you. I don't know the full responsibilities of the Director of Equity, but I do believe that it is the responsibility of our district to ensure... to ensure that all students, that's the mission, that all students are prepared for college or career, that they have a rigorous curriculum that allows them to grow personally. And given the diversity of our student body, 22,000 approximately students, there may, there is no doubt a need for a person whose responsibility is to look at what adjustments, what changes, what modifications, what accommodations may be necessary to ensure equity within the district.
And Christian, the question goes to you. What students do you feel like are being left behind by our district? And would a director of equity help remedy that?
Thank you, Mr. Patterson, for the question. I mean, thank you for your work that you've been doing in the district. At UCLA, I sat on the hiring board of our Equity, Inclusion and Diversity Board for the Vice Chancellor of that. And I realize that there is a great need. The need is great, not just locally, but statewide, nationally. And for myself, I believe that there is a need for that, right? But also I understand that everything has to be taken into account. And I, based upon, you know, the stuff that I know, I don't really know exactly why that was denied in regards to the director of equity. But I would love to get more information about that. And when I do, then we'll be able to talk a little bit more about that. I do believe that there are students that are left behind and there is a need for us to pay more close attention to that. Our student achievement rate is not up to par, is below level. And I think that this is where the director of equity can come in and really help with that.
Thank you. And Anita, the same question to you. What students do you feel are currently being left behind by the district? And will a director of equity help with that?
You know, I wasn't totally sure exactly what the position director of equity would encompass. And so I did my research. I found that the Palmdale School District has two, actually. They have one director of equity who deals mostly with concerns from the Hispanic community and another one that deals mostly with their concerns from African-American community. The Lancaster School District has a director of equity. And in my research, my limited research, I found that these people definitely help our underprivileged students. I would most definitely like to look into this more because I believe that that position in itself could help those students in a way that maybe other people are overlooking and not maybe focusing on. Well, I would definitely like to look into it more and I believe that it would be a benefit for especially our underprivileged students.
Thank you. Our next question from Baron Gardner, a local teacher and presidents, president of the Alliance of Black Student Equity. He asked this. What do you see as the main obstacles and issues that have contributed to the so-called achievement gap in academic and behavioral outcomes for African-American students? How do you plan on addressing these issues? Christian, let's start with you.
Definitely. Can you repeat that one more time? That was a pretty lengthy question.
Yes. What do you see as the main obstacles and issues that have contributed to the so-called achievement gap in academic and behavioral outcomes for African-American students? How do you plan on addressing these issues?
Yeah, definitely. There is a need for, especially during right now, during our COVID-19 process, there is a digital divide. As a teacher in high school, and thank you, Mr. Gardner, for the question. As a teacher right now, teaching high school students, a lot of high school students are actually doing work and doing on Zoom on their phone. And that's unacceptable. And so that goes back to the previous question in regards to equity. There is an equity gap. There is a student achievement gap. And there's a lot of things that contributes to that, right? So it's also the relationship building part of it. As a teacher, it's my job not just to teach and instruct, but also to build that relationship with that student. So if students don't have that sense of hope, that sense of that their, their teacher cares for them, then there is another reason of why they, you know, dropout rates are at a high rate as well right now. And so I believe that there is a great need to make sure that we close that achievement gap. And I believe that our school district is on the, on the way. I talked to a, one of my friends, a colleague as well, I believe of yours at Eastside, Mr. Cowan. And he was telling me that you guys are partnering with Social Justice Equity, Social Justice Learning Institute. And so there is a, a social justice component which makes people involve, makes the students involve because they're learning about their history, learning about themselves. And so I think that that is one way that we can achieve the closure.
That is time.
Sorry.
No worries. That was a great answer. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and go to Anita. Same question. Anita, what do you think contributes to the achievement gap for black students? And how do you plan on addressing that so-called achievement gap?
Well, I believe that the, that the Antelope Valley Union High School District, actually any district can do more. And I'd like to see, I'd like to think that maybe this director of equity position might be able to help. But I'd also like to see more mentors. I have seen how mentorship really seems to help a lot of these students. And I, I've actually seen one-on-one, people in the community that have come in and helped mentor on a, on a regular, semi-regular basis. And it's made a huge difference in the lives of students. I'd, I'd like to see maybe an indication and, and a class, maybe an ethnic studies class might help as well. I think that there's a huge misunderstanding between a lot of different ethnic groups. And, and maybe we just need to have that conversation. There needs to be connections made between these students, the, the one that passes you in the hallway and nobody ever mentions or says hi. I, I remember one incident real quick that a student came running up to me at the end of the school year and, and had his mother in tow and said, Ms. Lynn, this is my mom. I'd never seen her before. Well, why didn't I, you know, make more connection with this kid? I, I think that those types of personal connections would really help a lot.
Thank you. And Dana, the same question to you. What do you believe contributes to the so-called achievement gap for black students? And how do you plan on addressing that issue?
Mr. Gardner, you have posed a question that cannot be answered in 90 seconds. Thank you for the challenge. I am black and was raised in a family of 12 kids. No two of us learn the same way. I am blind. I went to high school with 18 blind students at the same high school. No two of us learn the same way. I volunteer at SOAR High School and I've worked with students who are highly motivated. But no two of them are motivated the same way. The achievement gap occurs because we try to come up with a uniform way of teaching the many diverse students that we have. And they don't learn the same way. So we have to come up with a plan that allows a person to develop personal education plans or programs for each student so they can learn the way they learn and get the encouragement the way they get encouragement. Some students just need one word. Other students may need a whole semester to encourage and motivate them. We need to accommodate that like we do students who are diagnosed with special needs. I don't think there has to be that kind of diagnosis to have an individual plan for each student.
Thank you for your answer. This next question comes from Keisha Como. She's a school counselor. She asked, what is one initiative you would champion to address the historical racial inequities and injustices of our local school system? Anita, to you.
I have a good friend of mine and for years he and I have had many, many discussions on, on the differences between different ethnicities and how they learn and, and how they relate. And we often talk, although nothing has actually happened in the last few years with it. But we often talk about sitting people down, talking about it. There is a program. I first was introduced to it by Oprah Winfrey. It's called The Challenge USA. And it does that in, and they mostly work in a lot of, like with a lot of groups, but with high schools as well. And it gives those students and the staff an opportunity to see the challenges that, that students have to go through. It, it opens your eyes. I would love to see something like that brought to the Antelope Valley Union High School District and incorporated at each one of the campuses. I feel that that would go a long way. Like I said, this friend of mine and I have, have had those many discussions. And, and I think that that would go a long ways towards helping students and staff understand and accept one another's differences.
Thank you. And Dana, the question goes to you. What is one initiative you would champion to address the historical racial inequities and injustices of our local school system?
If I may be creative in coming up with an initiative, I, I would develop something that I would call, I see something in you. I think that part of the problem with our black students, our Latino students is that because of society, we get a lot of negative reinforcement. Or, or even our disabled students. I mean, as a blind person, I heard a lot when I was growing up, he's blind, he can't. So we get a lot of you can't input. And I think that we have to have initiatives that say, I see something in you. And then work with that student in developing, what is that something that we see? That, that type of encouragement, I call it the tapping on the shoulder. Joella Wilson was a counselor at Antelope Valley High School in the 90s. She's now gone. But she would tap students whenever she got information about a program. She could go specifically to a student and say, this is for you. I see you in that. And we need that kind of initiative.
Thank you. Christian, the question goes to you. What is one initiative you would champion to address the historical racial inequities and injustices of our local school system?
Definitely. So as a youth pastor, I believe I mentioned it earlier. I've been working with black and brown youth, underprivileged youth for the last, since I was 15, really. And I'm 34 now, so do the math. I've been doing a lot of work in that area for myself. It kind of alludes back to this idea of equity. But I also want to add two things to it, this idea of inclusion and diversity. Racism is real, it exists. And so for us as board members, as educators, as people of the community, we really, really, really need to center that at some of our conversations. But, you know, equity is really the meaning of individual, social, emotional, and academic needs of all students. So that they have clear and equal active access to a just and empowering education. So for me, I want to champion that in regards to the equity, inclusion, and diversity. Four things that I realize is that we have to reflect. We have to realize that it does exist. Then we have to learn and then unlearn it. And then we have to build upon it. But then we build upon it through challenging and dismantling. And so for myself, I really want to champion this idea of equity, inclusion, and diversity. And thank you for that question.
Thank you. Our next question comes from us, to us from someone who wishes to remain anonymous. What are your thoughts regarding the presence of law enforcement officers on campus? And would you be willing to remove them? Dana, you first.
Again, I'm going to refer to the LCAP, one of the, and, and the mission. We are supposed to provide a safe and secure campus. And I don't know the conditions on all of the campuses. I spend most of my time at SOAR. But if there's some type of law enforcement that needs to be there in order to accomplish that goal of a safe and secure campus, we should provide that. Having said that, anybody, law enforcement, janitor, clerk, teacher, principal, anybody who's working on the education of our youth must have the education of our youth as their number one goal, the number one motivating factor that gets them to do what they do. And so if we have on the campus law enforcement officers who don't have that as their goal, they treat the students as you're going to be the next person signed up for prison, then they shouldn't be on our campus. Only persons who are interested in the well-being of our students and their proficiency academically, their preparation for society should be on our campus.
And Christian, the question goes to you. What are your thoughts regarding law enforcement on the campus? And would you be willing to remove them?
Emancipation, not incarceration. Emancipation and not incarceration. If you're still on Facebook, I want you to hashtag that in the Facebook as well. Emancipation and not incarceration. We have to understand that some students live in fear because of being racially profiled, stigmatized, stereotyped, et cetera. I was listening in on the last, what was it? The last school board meeting. And they were stating that there is no contract in place, if I'm correct. And so that allows up for some money to be redistributed, reallocated. And I believe that we need to invest in more counselors. We need to invest in more therapists. We need to invest in more equity-centered teachers, educators that care about our students. And ultimately, if, you know, if it doesn't work or, you know, they still want to keep the cops on campus as well, I would definitely remove their uniforms so that, you know, removes the level of fear as well.
And Anita, the question goes to you. Your thoughts regarding law enforcement on campus? And would you be willing to remove them?
I want to thank you for bringing up this concern because I'd like to share some thoughts. I believe that it's a much bigger issue. And it, it warrants something more of a discussion other than a yes or no answer. When we leave our homes, we hope that no one will harm us. When we apply ourselves to our jobs or students are focused on their studies, we hope that we'll be treated with respect. We hope that we won't be judged by the color of our skin or by the way we talk or how we look. We hope we will be safe. Teachers need to be able to teach students without the fear of disruption. And students need to be able to focus on their education without the fear of being bullied. Parents need to be able to send their students to school and hope that they will be safe. Having been on the board before, I do know some of the circumstances involved and, and why the deputies are on the campus. I also know that there's many, many people trying to keep and make sure that staff and students are safe while they're on the campus and while they're not on the campus. Can we improve? Of course we can. And when I'm elected to the board, I want to be a part of making those improvements happen.
Thank you. School shootings have been front page news for two decades now. What would you do as a school board member to prevent another such tragedy from impacting our students? Christian, the question goes to you.
Definitely. Can you repeat that one more time?
Yes. School shootings have been front page news for two decades now. What would you do as a school board member to prevent another such tragedy from impacting our students?
Definitely. In regards to that, mass shooting is all over the world, all over the nation. It just happened locally at Sogas High, I believe, in Santa Clarita. So there is a need for protection. There is a need for safety. Kind of like what my colleague, Mr. Lamont, was saying, that police officers, not police officers, but that, that specifically, people need to understand that there is a need for safety. Safety should be number one priority. And so for myself, I want to make sure that we protect our students. I know there are some rhetoric or some verbiage going around that students need to, not students, but teachers need to be, they need to have guns. By no way and no means should they have guns. They should have pencils and erasers and computers, et cetera. And so I would definitely look into different ways of protecting our youth and our students or teachers and our staff.
Thank you. And Anita, the question goes to you. What would you do as a school board member to help prevent a school shooting?
I've done a lot of research about the school shootings. And it breaks my heart when you take a look at the numbers of how many students have it breaks my heart when you take a look at the numbers of how many students have been injured, how many students have been affected emotionally, and how many students have died because of school shootings. And because I've been on the board for prior, I do have an advantage in in the fact that I do know how many times, at least when I was on the board, schools were threatened. And I have to tell you, that was one of the benefits of working with the Sheriff's Department because they had the ability, the technology to take a look at threats before they actually happened. And then, of course, they have the ability to go out and investigate those threats. And and I felt that I felt that that was one safety measure. The Antelope Valley Union High School District, through Shandolin Williams, who's an assistant superintendent, has a number of, and they did a presentation to the board of all of the different safety. I'm going to use mechanisms that they use and and are in place currently from training all the way down to hiring more security, as well as training with Sheriff's Department. I I don't ever want to hear of another shooting on any of the campuses, especially in the Antelope Valley. I don't, I I want to make sure that you are safe when you go to school. I want to make sure students are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dana, the question goes to you. What would you do as a school board member to prevent a school shooting?
There is absolutely nothing I can do to prevent a school shooting. Whether it's a school board member or an individual. If you look at the news and listen to the stories about where mass shootings occur, they spring up in the most unusual places. We always react unexpectedly, like maybe it's the town. Oh, it was the small, quiet town. Or in the synagogue? It's just bizarre. So as a school board member, as I said, I can't prevent the shooting. But I can advocate with our legislators, and I would do that. With our state legislators, our federal legislators, in coming up with legislation that limits the equipment that is used to carry out mass shooting.
Thank you, Dana. Our next question comes from an anonymous community member. They ask, what is the appropriate way for a school district to deal with a school employee who is a sexual predator? Anita?
Well, again, I'm going to refer to the 13 and a half years when I was on the school board and the issue did come up. And of course, that's a closed session matter because it is a personnel matter. And a lot of people don't understand that, but it has to be that way. But but the dealing with such a situation was always in every instance that I, you know, was concerned with, happened quite fast and it was quite appropriate. There is no place for a sexual predator on the campus of any school in the state of California.
And Dana, your thoughts? What is the appropriate way for a school district to deal with a school employee who is a sexual predator?
I think that there has to be two things. As a board member, my most important concern is the safety of the students. So a employee who is a sexual predator must be immediately removed from any contact with students, period. But I also think that we should give concern to that individual too. And make sure that that person gets the appropriate treatment that they might need concerning the issue.
All right. Thank you. And Christian, your thoughts? What is the appropriate way for a school district to deal with a school employee who is a sexual predator?
There is no room for a sexual predator to be on any of our campuses. I know that just this year alone, there's been a couple, whether it's at Highland High School and a couple other schools. And there's no, there's no room for it anywhere. Our children, our teenagers, our scholars should not be subject to be preyed upon by anyone. And I think that Mr. Lemon stated that, you know, the therapy is specifically needed as well. Treatment, at the end of the day, we want to make sure that that child, that student is given the proper resources needed after something has happened. Because it is happening amongst our students all over the nation. And specifically in Lancaster, we want to make sure Lancaster and Palmdale, that that does not, that does not happen under our watch.
Thank you. Our next question. Some of our schools have teaching positions that go unfilled and must then be taught by long-term subs. How would you seek to improve recruitment so that every class has a qualified teacher? Dana, you first.
There are many factors that come into play when you're talking about recruiting teachers. Obviously, we have to begin by creating a school district that is an environment that is desirable for employees. I'd like to see us reach the point that people are begging, knocking on the door, saying, hey, can we teach here? We like what this school district is doing. That would be my goal, number one. Number two, I think it's also, you have to make sure that Antelope Valley is a place where people want to come. It's, it's a great place for for many of us who are here. There are some of us who are here who don't want to be here, but we have to make sure it's a place where people want to be. So I would seek recruitment, though, to make sure that we have qualified and diverse. So look at all places where we might find that, within the state, outside the state.
Thank you. And Christian, how would you seek to improve recruitment so that every class has a qualified teacher?
There's a few things, but the educators are here in the Antelope Valley, they're here. So that goes back to my, you know, my idea of being more, being fresh and innovative with our ideas. So it goes back to marketing. We have to promote. I believe there's a director of communications that is available. And so that goes back out to us reaching on all platforms, using our social media. It could be TikTok to promote. A lot of our students use that, but also teachers as well, you know, engaging on Instagram, Facebook, all these different outlets to make sure that, you know, our educators are aware of the opportunity and availabilities. And then another part of my platform is to incentivize teachers to want to come, right? And so one of my platforms is to increase salary pays for teachers and staff. And so, you know, we're living in a pandemic and I know that money and our economy is necessary. And so we want to make sure that we invest in our teachers. We invest in equity-centered teachers and, you know, let them know that the district cares for them. And, you know, in return, they'll be able to care for our students.
Thank you. And Anita, the question goes to you. How would you seek to improve recruitment so that every class has a qualified teacher?
Well, I have to tell you that I've always been quite proud of the Antelope Valley Union High School District. I think that the district has some of the most qualified and amazing teachers. And when I was on the board, I did have the opportunity to attend a couple of recruitment fairs. I have to tell you, when you're standing there with the Antelope Valley Union High School District, signs and the logos, and right next to you is a beach city in San Diego, and the person who's doing the recruitments in flip flops, it's a little hard to to say, well, come on to the desert, you know, don't, don't worry about the 102 temperature, it won't bother you after a while. But I do agree that we need to have the incentive for people to come. And when they come, they'll see the programs and the things that they can do and the opportunities that are afforded to them, and then, and they stay. And why not? Because it's one of the best districts in high school districts in in Southern California, I think, maybe even in the state. But I do believe that there has to be certain incentives. And maybe I know that there's an incentive just by the way you can come and and the district will, you know, give you a monetary incentive to come to the district. I remember the district was looking for an ag teacher, went all the way to Michigan and back to the Midwest looking for one. Sometimes it's just hard to find qualified teachers. But once you get here, you'll enjoy your work at the Antelope Valley Union High School District.
Thank you. And our next question. What is a class that is not currently mandated by the state or district that you would like to see taught at every campus site? Christian, that question goes to you.
I believe I mentioned it earlier in regards to, I believe it's a social justice learning institute in regards to ethnic studies. I believe that it's not mandated. I know it's taught at a couple of our campuses, but not at all of our campuses. Our, our school, our schools and our district is comprised of over 80% black and brown students. So why not invest in an ethnic studies course, a history course that teaches them about themselves, their legends, their icons, that have paved the way for them to even be educated? And I think that that is something that we have to have to, you know, push and make sure that they are aware of. Because if you learn about yourself, if you understand yourself, if you know yourself, you'll be able to succeed so much in life. There's a quote, it's called, education is emancipation. You know, and once you are educated, you can emancipate and become free.
Thank you. And Anita, the same question to you. What is a class that is not currently mandated by the state or district that you would like to see taught at every campus and site?
Hey, I do believe, I I agree with Mr. Green. I do believe that an ethnic studies class would be an extremely beneficial class for a lot of people. I mentioned previously about working with this friend of mine and and the fact that we'd like to help people understand a little bit more about each other and what makes them tick and 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 their ways of learning and what they think. I I think too often we don't stop and ask our students, what do you think? And I'd like to be able to do that a little bit more and encourage them to be involved. And I think that there's room for improvement. I I think that the education is changing right now. I really do. And I think that it's going to be in the, in the near future, a slightly different look than it looks like right now. So I'm hoping that the changes are all for the positive.
Thank you. And Dana, the question goes to you. What is a class that is not currently mandated by the state or district that you would like to see taught at every campus site?
Let me modify the question, if I may. There is no class that I say I want to see taught on every campus site. I think in the 21st century, we have the technology that we can make sure that a class is available to any student on any campus site. But the class doesn't have to be taught on the campus site. I.e., what we are doing right now in terms of distance learning or in our virtual academy. That being said, I would say public speaking. I think we underestimate the value of public speaking. We mandate that students know how to write and communicate their thoughts, but we don't emphasize the value of public speaking. A few years ago, I offered a program, an after-school program in Palmdale, one of the Palmdale Elementary Schools, called Excite, which was excelling in confidence, identity, thought, and expression. And it was about public speaking and how public speaking enhances a student's confidence and their identity and their belief in themselves. That should be taught and available for every student on the campus, on our campuses.
Thank you very much. Our next question. What is a time that you were wrong in a public setting? And how did you go about rectifying that mistake? Anita, you first.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to think right now and pick one time that I was wrong. I totally believe in, I I don't gloss over when I make a mistake. I totally believe in admitting it. And and possibly, if the situation warrants it, explaining why I felt that way or why I acted that way. I don't, I don't make decisions in isolation. I often get other people's opinions. And sometimes it bothers other people that I I do that and I don't just take your word for it. I have to know. There's always, almost always, two sides to every story. And I research that and look into it. The time that I was probably, gosh, most wrong, I I feel like you cannot emphasize the wrong. It's what you do after that. So I apologize. I look into, understand and try and understand exactly what was wrong and why, and then learn from that and move forward. I don't really like to look back on those mistakes because that's not the direction I'm heading. I'm heading forward.
Thank you. And Dana, the same question to you. What is a time that you were wrong in a public setting? And how did you go about rectifying that mistake?
I have a difficult time coming up with a situation which I was wrong in a public setting. I can come up with situations which I was wrong. But it it wasn't in a public setting that I could come up with one. I do acknowledge the times that I am wrong and want to correct them. I'll, I'll tell you a time in which I did something wrong and I regret that I did it and apologize to the person. But I once made a statement to a person who who told me that she wanted to be a lawyer. And I gave, posed a few questions to her and she didn't give answers that I thought were good. So I made a declaration that she would fail in law school. I'm sorry I said that to her. She did, in fact, fail after her first year. And I apologize for the statement. But that's why it's very important to me now that we, when we're dealing with students and in a learning environment, be very careful about the things that we say that might impact the outcome of what a student does.
Thank you. And Christian, the question goes to you. What is a time that you were wrong in a public setting? And how did you go about rectifying that?
So every year, as a public servant and a youth pastor, we've hosted many, many events for our youth and our parents in the community of the Antelope Valley. There was an event for our backpack school, back to school drive where we gave backpacks away. And there was a moment where I suggested that we only do 300 backpacks. But, you know, there, my, my contention went, it was like, no, let's do 1,000. I think there's a great need. And in this backpack, we also do food and clothes, et cetera. And, you know, I was wrong. There was a great need, there is a great need for giving back to our children, our parents, our families in the Antelope Valley. That is why I'm so community-driven, community-centered driven. I posted over hundreds and hundreds of events to give back. And in that instance, I was wrong about the certain amounts. I had apologized. And we were able, we were able to work some things out to where we were able to meet the needs of the people of our community. And apologize, it doesn't hurt anybody.
Guys, I just want to thank you for your time. We are down to our final two questions. Our next question. What do you believe would be your single most important function as a school board member? Dana, to you first.
My single most important function as a school board member is to help the district move clearly into the 21st century. And that means using 21st century technology and preparing for 21st century learning or needs in the college and career market. When I look at our schools, I've been on the campus, as I said, for the past almost 30 years. And the way we teach is mostly the way we, I was taught when I was in high school in the late 60s. And I don't think it should be that way. I am happy for the fact that the pandemic has forced us to get out of the box and do some creative things. and do some creative things in ensuring that uh our students learn. I don't wanna get back into the box. Uh, I want to figure out how to improve the things, the problems that we have discovered in this experiment, but don't go back to what we used to do. Uh, that isn't progress. That isn't growth.
Thank you, Dana. And Christian, what do you believe would be your single most important function as a school board member?
Accountability. We have to be accountable for the decisions that we make. Again, we are living in a pandemic where this is gonna be with us longer than we expect and we have to figure out how to make sure that we uh keep our si- our kids, um, our staff, um, our faculty, um, down to the janitor, to the clerk, right? We have to make sure that everyone is uh safe. And in accountability, we have to make sure that the decisions that we make in closed session, um, and then also, we're, you know, listening to the public statements, uh, the public comments and being accountable to our, our, our constituents, to those uh, community leaders, our parents, our grandparents, our foster parents. We gotta make sure that we are accountable and held accountable for the actions that we do. Um, and that is in regards to voting on these different items. Um, and you know, I think that also within that, we wanna make sure we be, be held accountable to um our, our budget, uh auditing our district budget. We wanna make sure that we are um trimming the fat and cutting the waste. And so accountability with the money and accountability with our community.
Thank you. And Anita, to you. What do you believe would be your single most important function as a school board member?
My single most important function would, would be to listen. I wanna hear what teachers have to say. I wanna hear what our classified have to say. I wanna hear what our parents have to say. I don't think people um give enough attention to the community members. They all have something they wanna say and an idea that they feel would help benefit their student in particular. I wanna listen to the students. I wanna be able to listen to, communication has always been key for me. But but the other end of communication is listening. And I think that that's one of the most important things for a board member. I said previously, I very rarely ever make a decision in isolation. I want the input from other people. I want to be able to hear. And oftentimes, when you do that, you find some amazing results.
Thank you. It is now time for our closing statements. So please uh leave your closing statement. I'll give you two minutes for this time. And also with that, please include how the community can best support you if someone was impressed with what they had to say, with what you had to say today. Um, Christian, I'll start with you.
Um, again, thank you all for joining. Um, every student, parent, teacher, staff and community member. Uh, thank you to my colleagues for a great conversation, um, Ms. Nguyen and Mr. Lamone, um, and Mr. Tilton for hosting this. Um, I am a leader. I'm not a follower. Um, I won't take sides. I won't follow no one's lead. That is why I'm running for office. Uh, I am a son of Lancaster, of the Antelope Valley. I have faced many odds and I overcame them. Not because of myself, but because of the support system that we have in place. That is why I'm running, to be that support system for our students, our staff, our teachers. Uh, my colleagues are amazing people, but I'm the best candidate because, because I am a leader. I have no invested interest. And I have the lived this, lived this experience as a student of the district. Um, again, I graduated from uh AB High School, uh, Go Lopes. Um, and I want to bring what I had, uh, what I had as a, what I didn't have um in high school and that was the love and support that I needed. Um, I'll leave with this statement. Uh, Jesus said, and you know, that's the preacher in me, sorry, uh, you know, "Suffer the little children and forbid them not to come unto me." And today I declare uh that education is saying, suffer the children and forbid them not. Hope plus education equals emancipation. And we, I, we, I want, um, and we should want our students to have the idea to be free and to do whatever they want, go wherever they want, live however they want, um, especially uh for their success. Um, I would love for you to get, to get your vote, uh, vote Christian Green on November third, twenty twenty. Uh, follow me on Facebook. It's Christian Green for Antelope Valley. Well, A V U H S D is the synonym. A V, the acronym, A V H U, wait, A B U H S D, so many letters, uh, number three. Thank you so much, Christian Green. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Christian. And Anita, your closing statement.
I wanna thank you, Mr. Tilton, for hosting this um town hall meeting and, and um, thank you to both of um Mr. Green and Mr. Lamond. And and um, I, I think that um, having had previously been on the board, I have experience. I have gone through the Masters in Governance Program through um California School Board Association twice. So I have the leadership capabilities. Um, having volunteered many, many years and many hours in our schools, I've seen firsthand what we need to do and we need to make sure that everyone has a voice, everyone has a voice. And um, I think that that, that will help and go a long way towards, then my whole goal is preparing our students for a solid educational foundation so they can go on and be and do what they want to do in their life after high school. And um, and that's my focus. It always has been and, and like I said, I've devoted many, many years to that whole purpose. Um, I wish everyone good luck and I hope that when people get their ballots, that they vote for Anita Nguyen for Antelope Valley Union High School District Board of Trustees. Thank you, Mr. Tilton.
Thank you, Anita. And Dana, your closing statement.
You can get more information about my campaign, about me and what I'd like to do for our community and our school district by visiting dana2020 dot vision. Dana, that's D A N A two zero two zero dot vision, V I S I O N. Or you can call seven six zero eight eight seven four zero four four. Call or text. My vision comes from three people who were instrumental in my life. My mother was instrumental before I went off to college. She said, "You will have the opportunity at Yale that your brothers and sisters and other kids in the community won't have. Your education will be worthless if when you come back, you're not able to communicate with them." The pastor of my church was influential. She taught me Philippians four thirteen, "I can do all things through Christ who strengthenedeth me." My neighbor Maude Riley was influential. She taught me about excellence. She said, "Be the task greater small, do it well or not at all." Those three women influenced who I am and are instrumental in my sharing the vision that I share now, notwithstanding the fact that I became blind when I was four years old. I wanna share that vision with twenty-two thousand plus other students for the next four years. Thank you.
I wanna thank all three of the candidates for spending their time with us tonight. Anita, Christian, Dana, you have been wonderful guests. Um, you would serve our community well and I'm honored as a community member and someone who lives in your district to have the option to vote for each and every one of you. Um, I also wanna thank those of you who watched on Facebook or who will watch on YouTube um later. Our students do not have the opportunity to vote for one of these three people, but we do and we have the opportunity. And we also have the responsibility to get this right, to make an educated vote, to make sure that we are paying attention to the issues and to uh what is best for our students. So thank you for taking the time and investing your evening in learning about these three. Thank you again, and um we're going to go ahead and wrap up. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we still live?